Well, Christy Sonnenberg is excused. Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Zabrowski?
Present.
All right. And open up public comments. Public comments are for agenda items only per state statutes. So if anybody's here to talk about the rec at political complex, that will be next month on the 19th, 7 o'clock. Otherwise, we will entertain public comments.
I missed my supper tonight because I got here early. But this is something-
Oh, excuse me. Name and address, please.
My name is Larry, Larry Worth. I live at, I'm in like Chateau, okay, 504165. I'm here for 50 plus years. And anyways, this is something that you wrote. It says, "Public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to share their comments, questions, opinions with the commission members on any topic they choose. However, new to the opening meeting was, the commission may not be able to answer the questions." I'm okay with that. But I can't even talk about anything other than that. What should I want me to talk about tonight?
Well, according to what the clerk posted today-
Where is that on here?
It's not on the agenda, but she-
Well, why isn't it?
Because I guess she didn't want to make the agenda two pages long citing the whole state statute. I don't know. I didn't ask the clerk. I just got this in an email.
Okay. Can I, I wanted to make a motion. Can I do that?
No, you're not on the planning commission.
You have to be on the planning commission to make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll lead him.
We're always looking for volunteers.
Looks like a great job.
I've got one. I don't know if we signed up. I guess nobody's following names.
No.
Don't just state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Bruce Ralph, W243 S1650, Leder Drive, Village of Wackasha. I just want to comment on your 4A request for fireworks, seasonal whatever. That property has no access from 164 at all. There is a small apron on Town Line, about 80 feet from the intersection of Town Line and 164. And I guess I would call it a deer path going into it. It's not a road. I don't know how people are going to get in there. I don't know what kind of people they're expecting. Not sure what your village ordinance is on fireworks. But looking up the state ordinance, anything larger than sparklers or whatever, you need a permit to buy. Are they going to issue permits at that site for people to buy their fireworks? Otherwise, people are buying fireworks illegally. I mean, I'm not for or against this thing. I just have a lot of questions about what the plan is. There's no site plan of where they're going to put this thing, what their approach is going to be, how many people they expect, what's their timeframe? Are they only going to be open the weekend of July 4th? We already have a fireworks place on National Avenue. If you want fireworks, go there and buy them. Other than that, that was my, oops, those were my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Westo, W237 S6830, Leder Drive. And yes, I'm not in the gym, but it doesn't matter. So as the first gentleman had asked is, why, I know that you say that the clerk put it in and posted it. But unfortunately, some of us don't go on there all the time because we're busy. We have lives of our own. And for someone to come in because the wonderful rec, rec center that the Village of Big Bend wants to propose, you know, it's going to directly impact my family, as I said at the last meeting. And the other question I get, it's just discerning that, you know, the, and this one, this agenda, according to this, very top line says, "Agenda amended." So you've already amended it. And then you're putting another amendment saying that we can't talk about the rec center. Fine, we can't talk about the rec center. But I want to know about the well station pump. And where exactly is all that water coming from? Because, well, we all drain on our wells. But the tax key on discussion 4B that is being brought up, I want to know, and I'm sure a lot of people here want to know, is that where you're going to break it off into three sections? And one of that sections is going to end up being the proposed water tower? And if that's the case, I believe that that was also brought up in 2012. And it basically was saying in that proposal that, no, we won't have people hooking up to it only if they really want to. But can you actually honestly tell the people of the Village of Big Bend that they will not have to hook up to the water and sewer? How is one business, and probably Kelly's neighbors because they'll probably be affected by it, how is it that one business, the big complex, is going to fund that water tower and maintaining that water tower and the pumping station and whatever else? So the multi-million dollar water pump that, you know, Big Bend wants to magically just put in, where is the water coming from? Where is it going to be located? Because that was never disclosed and it still isn't disclosed. And where is the money coming from to even erect that and to maintain it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Seago, West 228 South, West 228 South 78 Enterprise Drive, Big Bend. I'm the founder and owner of American Fireworks here in Big Bend. And we've been a part of your business community for over about 20 years now. And I'm here to speak on the agenda item 4A, Freedom Fireworks Application, which I feel should be denied on the basis that the applicant is asking to sell fireworks from a tent, which is illegal per village ordinance, check for 10-4D-7. This is the code. And I quote, "Location of sales. Sales of fireworks may only occur from a permanent building that has been inspected and given approval by the building, the village building inspector and the village fire chief. All permanent buildings which hold for the intent and later selling or utilized in the sale of fireworks shall be equipped with a fire sprinkler system, fire alarm, and any other fire safety equipment required by the village fire chief and village board. Any additions to or changes of location must be appropriate to village board." So that is the code. I, it's so clear. I don't know how it got this far, honestly. It seems like the cart is before the horse. Is that the proper way to say it? Whether intended or not, this plan clearly indicates the intention to sell fireworks in an illegal manner that would violate village ordinance. And most certainly, as we are, have been in the community operating for many years, if this was available, we most definitely would have been doing this. We, so that's all I have. I'll leave it with that. Thank you. And, oh, one more thing. And other vendors will definitely be wanting to do that as well. Thank you.
There is public comments. If there are no more public comments, we'll move via agenda along.
Does anybody have each 3 or 3? Does one of these do have 3? I don't have 3 or 3. Does anybody?
Yes.
No.
He don't have 3 or 3.
No, 3, page 3 of 3 being the blank page at the end.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Was item 11 of the-
Item 3A, consideration and approval of minutes. And item 3B, Thursday, January 29, 2026, public hearing first. And then over to planning commission. We got 2 firsts. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. I oppose. Motion carries.
Actually, I already went through the board approval.
Oh, it did?
Yeah. Because of meetings.
Right.
So, and there were no edits. So I'll make a motion.
Okay. Fair enough. The motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Move on to the planning commission meeting tonight.
Want to make a motion to disperse the reading? One second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. I oppose. Motion carries.
One second.
Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 4A, discussion of possible action under request by Freedom Fireworks LLC for approval of a site plan and plan of operations to allow for the seasonal retail sale of consumer fireworks with incidental sale of local products that is properly located at South 63, West 24015, Town Line Road, tax key PVV 2025990. Applicant, Freedom Fireworks LLC. The subject is approximately 1.26 acres in size. It is zone B4 Highway Business District. Ben?
Just give a quick summary of the staff report that you guys have in your packets. So again, the site is located right at the southwest corner of 164 and Town Line Road. It's about an acre and a quarter, zone B4 Highway Business District. The lot is surrounded by a larger farm parcel that is also zoned similarly. And a farm across 164, the site of the proposed rec project, is also zoned B4 across the street. The application proposes seasonal fireworks sales. It's mainly fireworks. They've noted some, I guess I'll call them incidental local products that they are proposing to also sell, but primarily would be the sale of fireworks. They are noting 2 phases in the application. However, phase 2 is really just conceptual and is not a part of this discussion and consideration. So really, all that's in front of you guys is phase 1. So I just wanted to point that out. Phase 1 would be served by, really the primary structure would be a temporary structure, that being a tent of about 5,000, or 5,000 square feet. Application noted, storage would be occurring in 2 storage containers. The applicant submitted a supplemental email that noted it'll only be 1 storage container. The general seasonality would be, and this was again clarified with supplemental information from the applicant, but the retail sales would occur basically Memorial Day to 4th of July, but they're proposing a couple of weeks of time to set up prior to Memorial Day and then a couple of weeks after the 4th for cleanup, cleanup activities. They've noted this would be 3 years relative to when phase 2 would occur. But again, phase 2 is conceptual only. And so it's probably worth a discussion if this is specifically a 3-year proposal or if they just think this will be 3 years but are really seeking permanent use until they move on to phase 4. Hours of operation would be 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on a 7-day-a-week basis, I believe. The site would be served by porta-potties, gravel driveway. They're showing about 41 parking spaces with some ADA spaces would seem based on village ordinance to generally meet the spacing, space number requirements of the code. I want to speak about the temporary tent. The ordinance gives a little bit of guidance, but not a lot about temporary structures. It defines them, basically saying what they are and what they're not. It really speaks to just the engineering of them, that they're not anchored permanently by the ground. Says they can be up by, for 9 months unless further extended by a plan commission. And that's about all it says. So we know we have a temporary structure. We know planning commission can authorize it to be put up, whereas there's not a lot of clarity in the ordinance is, is it subject to building setback requirements? Can it be placed anywhere? So that's just something for the planning commission to consider. And it's worth noting for the applicant, for his phase, future phase 2 plans, is that the tent wouldn't be building setbacks. The building setback is 35 feet from the right of way. I believe the tent's 10 or 15 feet. So again, there's nothing that I read in the ordinance that says the planning commission can't consider a temporary structure that doesn't meet the zoning requirements of a permanent structure. I'm thinking a roadside farm stand is a good example of something temporary that's located well within a road setback. But worth noting that, and certainly the applicant should take note, that no building could be authorized in that same location, that the site isn't quite as accommodative for permanent structures per the code. I noted that porta-potties would be provided in this phase. No lighting was noted in the application, but the supplemental piece noted it would be temporary commercial lighting. That's what the applicant noted. We have not been provided any signage details, but a sign location. Free standing is noted towards the intersection. That would need to, that would require a separate permit where the village can review the sign for all the signs there. So that is the general summary of the request. I'd imagine that the applicant who's here will want to provide some additional detail. Just a few things sort of generally to think about as I kind of went through this. This is a situation where the planning commission is the authority to approve or deny site plans, plan of operation. The code is rich with several design considerations that obviously ties a lot to building standards. You're not getting a building, right? You're getting a tent. We understand this is temporary in nature and it doesn't fall within the architectural design standards. But I think there's a broader question of, is the broader purpose and intent of your site plan standards intended to include these temporary structures? It could be on a seasonal but permanent basis, I guess. It's temporary and it's seasonality. But this could be, you know, if it's proposed to be up for more than 1 year, 2 years or 3 years. So I think that's just something to think about. They aren't proposing any landscaping. They are proposing to remove some trees. The planning commission has clear authority to require landscaping. I don't know if they're, if they're proposing the landscaping and I don't recall if this would be a future phase. But that's something to think about. If any landscaping would be appropriate to require as any type, as an approval condition. I mentioned term. Again, they're proposing 3 years. It's not clear if it's, we think 3, or if it's 3 and then this usually terminate. But I think that's worth, worth discussion. And then the last thing is an issue that was brought up by one of the public comment. And that's the licensing issues and the ordinance issues. So fireworks, planning commission's addressing the zoning code. And this is where it gets a little bit complicated. We're here to look at site plan, plan of operation, plan of operation request and whether it meets the zoning code requirement. Fireworks sales touch on other village ordinances. There is a village ordinance in licensing that sets a per capita limit on the number of licenses that can be sold per 1,500 residents. And I think more significantly perhaps are the, within the nuisance or the orderly conduct chapter, are several standards that were mentioned tonight about the appropriateness of tents for fireworks sales, the need for fire suppression and brick and mortar. And so I have spoken to the applicants. They're well aware that even a plan commission approval tonight would be subject to licensing. And licensing cannot be obtained until they can convince the board to change those policies. So again, those are things that are not primary to this request. But again, the commission is to address health, safety and general welfare. And so I do think in terms of, if you have concerns about, you know, standards with respect to fire safety, I do think that is a legitimate thing to be discussed tonight. But ultimately, we're not here to affect those policy decisions. Those will occur at the board level if they're pursued by the applicant or the village. I am happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Question for Bill, our fire inspector.
Yes, sir. You mean they're going to stand up for it?
No, 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 not at all, no.
No, it's okay.
5,000, 5,000 square feet. I know that's not required to sprinkle.
No. But let's look at what the load is in sight.
Right.
And I don't believe years back we had said that, you know, I don't think we're tents anymore. We want to buy for masonry buildings and we want it to be sprinkled so it can handle the situation that you would have with the president and for the safety of the people.
Yeah, so if we date back to former police chief Harder, Michael Harder, he was one that kind of championed that. We didn't want the freeway or the interchange to be littered with a bunch of tents for safety reasons. So that, I believe, is what led to this code change. It is kind of weird that it's under the orderly conduct. So you got to do it for it. But ultimately, that's what drove the requirements for brick and mortar from a safety standpoint.
And the sprinkler system.
Yeah.
I spent hours helping to dig up that life.
It's explosives and they're near and dear to my heart. Believe me, I love whatever it is.
Thank you.
There's a reason that-
At least somebody respects me as a friend.
There's a reason that there's extra safety around something like that. Right.
Anything else, sir?
No, thank you. I appreciate your input.
Not a problem. I'll send you the bill.
Check's in the mail.
Ben, I have a zoning question. You went through the zoning code change for portable containers and permanent and limited use of portable storage containers on any building? And if I recall, I'm trying to find it on a search report. You can't use a portable container as a primary structure. In this case, the tent and the storage container, neither one of them are a primary structure on the property. So no accessory structures are permitted until you have a primary structure. Am I correct on that?
I think that's a good point in terms of, I'd have to look at the code if it says a principal use or a principal building. And they are establishing a principal use with the tent.
But we're, I mean, my concerns from a building code standpoint is ADA accessibility, you know, portable toilets are not always maintained as ADA compliant. And, you know, I completely understand that you have an event at, you know, a public business that you want to have a grand opening for the tent. Great, love it. Protect people from the weather. But as a primary structure, I'm questioning use. And then I thought we had a limitation also on the portable container size.
That is quite honestly, it's possible. I didn't look at that in detail.
Yeah. There was discussion when we were going through it that they were stacking 40-foot containers in lieu of a permanent accessory building. And we put it in the zoning, or we, I thought we talked about language in zoning code. Limited the size of the container and the length duration of the container. Construction was, construction activities were different. Like if you're building construction, you're permitted a container for construction purposes. But for storage purposes, we are limited to use. And I want to say it's 30 days.
I don't see, I did just a word search on containers in the zoning code. I was seeing stuff about trash receptacles, not about like pods or-
I'm doing the same thing.
And I guess in my head, I'm thinking, I was thinking everything was temporary. And so it wasn't like they were building an accessory building prior to the construction of the principal building. Everything was just temporary. But I don't know. And if there, I may have missed something about containers specifically.
I don't remember who approved that. I don't know if the board did.
Okay, I was going to say, we, I have quite a bit of container. And I know out there, there was a limit on quantity of containers, size of containers and duration.
Duration and permitting required to have a container.
Right.
I mean, certainly, if it's considered a temporary structure, it's clear that the commission has the authority to allow those things as it sees fit. Does it, I think it would fall under the definition of temporary structure. But if there's more specific code in here somewhere, it's not necessarily-
Yeah, I know the state building code also addresses temporary buildings. I'm not 100% sure on the degree.
Yeah, and that's reality. It could be sitting in another code. And you guys may authorize it. And they may be stuck dealing with building code, like they're stuck working through some other codes even if it gets, advances here, here tonight.
Because I know, I know on like a temporary electrical standpoint, 90 is the limit for temporary electrical installations. So, you know, if you start today and they go through July, we're looking at the limits on the temporary. I want to say that that follows the legal, but I'm not upset about that.
Are we going to hear from the applicant on this?
Yeah, great if they want to.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for your time tonight. Number 1, I appreciate it. My name is Dustin Heint from Freedom Fireworks in Destle, Wisconsin. Just a couple of certifications. We are under contract to purchase that piece of property you mentioned. We do have the 2-phase plan that Ben mentioned, where we would build a building after year 3. Basically, our plan is to operate seasonally for 3 years. Fourth year, build a permanent structure to house both buildings. We are looking tonight for approval on just our first phase of basically from the planning commission with hopes of having a discussion with the village board about allowing a second fireworks company to operate within their village. We're looking to become landowners with the village and grow my business. We have obtained an ALTA survey, initial site plan aerials and plans to update the property right away, including some landscaping, grass and so forth to meet the code of the green space requirements. Freedom Fireworks has been operating in the surrounding areas for over 4 decades. I've had over 20 seasonal locations in 2025, 20 tents, 20 portable containers, 20 municipalities that accept and approve and are not scared of fireworks. Destle, Wisconsin is a unique marketplace where we feature state fair or award-winning products from Wisconsin small businesses. Items like beer mustard, barbecue sauce, pickled veggies, cherry products, cranberry products, local honey. I can go on and on. We feature over 50 products from over 25 small Wisconsin businesses. We would love the opportunity to bring the best of Wisconsin and Freedom Fireworks to your village of Big Bend. I have to apologize to Ben and the commission on how all this worked. I have no idea on how all this works. I thought we'd bring it up to the commission and then we go in front of the board with all the insanity of the previous month's planning commission agenda, the new planner. I just, we understand that things got overlooked a little bit. We completely recognize the complexity of all of this. And we recognize that this is, we can take special considerations. We could have had a discussion with the board first, but those are just words. This shows a serious plan. This shows motivation, not just talk. We have a serious plan to become landowners in the village. We're hoping for the commission would either approve tonight with- We're hoping for the commission would either approve tonight with multiple contingencies, or table tonight for consideration from the town, or speak with the village board about approving a second fireworks stand. I'm here to answer any questions you guys have about me. We're hoping to basically get the same opportunity that Mrs. Seidel was given. Fireworks stands have been operated out of tents in this village for a long time. They were given a little opportunity to operate out of a tent and then build. We were hoping for a little bit of an opportunity to operate out of a tent and then build.
That wasn't there at all.
We're looking for some serious, serious designs. We'd be willing to put in the parking stalls to make it official, to show how serious we are, not just put in gravel. We'd be willing to landscape, green space, parking lot, and obviously just leave the space for the tent. We do recognize that the tent would not suffice for where the building would go. We're hoping to put in a six thousand square foot building with all the requirements of the sprinkler system, and knockbox, and alarm systems and all that.
Three years seems like a little excessive for starting to build. Is there a particular reason why it would be three years?
I guess would be excessive, or not excessive, the extra expense of the sprinkler system, almost a hundred grand of it, we just wanted to get some extra funds or financing to grow the business and make the plan possible, basically. I don't know if one year would do it, especially with the construction. I don't know if two years would do it, especially with the construction that potentially go on sixty-four.
Well, what if this wouldn't pan out like the way you planned it to pan out, and three years, and now we're stuck with gravel parking lot over there?
That's, I guess, my risk, and I would be the property, we do have some other options or plans for the property, if this fell through, you know what I'm saying? There's always another option, but I don't think that's gonna come true, so. But just to show my seriousness, that we aren't just gonna be here for three years and ask you to come back and approve us again, we'd be willing to spend some money to make this first phase happen, and move on to the third phase, or second phase, sorry.
How many buildings do you currently own and operate?
I own any buildings right now. I own a strip mall, I bring in a strip mall, twenty-five hundred square foot strip mall, and then the rest are seasonal locations.
Seasonal tents. And have you, where you've had seasonal tents up anywhere else, have you, do you own that land?
Some of them I do.
And have you approached any of those municipalities while putting up a building anywhere else?
Yes, actually, yes, some of them I do. I own two other pieces of property, Bloomfield and Towne Dover, and the rest of the nine end ranches there.
Are they on the same kind of timeline, what you're looking, like how long have you operated tents on those properties that you own, but potentially to build a building there?
I've owned one in Dover for five years, Bloomfield for two. Don't have any plans to build anything in Bloomfield. There was some plans to go in Dover, but that just fell through. But yet there really is no other plans to build besides, okay, better.
And so the one you've had up for five years?
Mm-hmm.
There's no plan to put a building up there?
Correct, correct. If this wouldn't work for a fireworks store at that particular location. We were trying for Destle, Wisconsin only, but that fell through.
And you guys are the trustees. I mean, should it go to the board first? You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna approve a plan, but it's not meeting the conditions of selling out of a tent, I think the board should get on board with it first.
Yeah, because of the impact on Chapter Ten, I think that has to be addressed, you know, because otherwise it's a non-starter, right?
It kind of is, yeah. I mean, if you...
We completely understand that.
Yeah, those are, those are the...
I agree with Kelly, I think, but should probably see if it's even feasible to do with a second fireworks license or not.
Yeah.
Well, two things, A, the restriction on the population, and as well as the Chapter Ten, the way that it's written, don't technically allow for it, so we'll talk about litigation.
I could have came in front of you guys with just words, this is something serious that you can consider, you know what I'm saying? And hopefully we can have a proper discussion about it.
But if you come to the board with a conceptual plan and that kind of stuff, at least we could figure if this thing is even gonna fly.
Sure, sure.
Before you put a lot of time and money and effort into this part of it.
Do you know what I'd be able to get on next board meeting, or is that too late? Is there a conceptual plan deadline possibly?
No, I think you'd be able to hit that.
You'd have to do it pretty quick.
Yeah.
Could we maybe table this tonight for future discussion at the board meeting to come back at a later date for approval on this?
The only thing I've just, and not to put anybody on the spot, but does anyone on the commission or board commission have concerns outside of that? Because it's, you know, I think it's, if you do, and if you don't, then that's okay, but if you do, I think it'd be worthwhile sharing it, just so the advocate knows there's a village board issue, but the commission has some site plan concerns.
Yeah, I definitely have some, some building code, ADA code. I mean, just looking at your parking layout, there's no turnaround radius for a fire truck even in your parking lot. So if you, if you had an event and you needed equipment in there to take care of that event, there's no, there's no egress, one parking lot, one driveway entrance.
Sure, sure.
I do have some serious building code.
And that was the civil engineer's initial layout. We told them to get as many parking as we can, and we do, it seem like we have excessive parking spaces. We can change that to where fire trucks can access that, no problem.
I would think that the board would also want to talk to Fire, Bill, because this property is on the exact opposite, almost end of town, is it not?
Yeah, it's on the northern end of town.
So I'm just, just saying, if you don't have sprinklers, you know, like we're, and you do have an incident, it's the farthest we have to go across the whole village. So I think there should just be some talk and consideration that they're linked up and on the same page, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you show only three fire extinguishers on your, and, you know, like, I, you know, Bill just basically said, the fire load you have in the building is extreme, you have three fire extinguishers, which is not sufficient enough.
Absolutely, it was just a standard, sir, whatever is required, one per thirty-five feet, we're probably be five in the tents, one in each container.
And that's all the things that the board will have to mesh out.
Right, and that's, I think...
It's, I've got a lot of, I've got a lot of red flags. I read this when I first got, you know...
Again, sir, this is not our first rodeo with this. We do this twenty different places, twenty different concerns, just like you, sir, absolutely. I did not, just because I didn't put down six fire extinguishers does not mean I don't know what they're expected for.
I would expect, you know, if we're gonna prove something, I would expect the entire plan here, not, we're gonna, we're gonna, we prove something, it doesn't get done, we're gonna think about that. And I do agree with Greg that three years is, that's long.
Yeah, okay.
You know, temporary use, temporary use structures to be as ninety, a hundred and eighty days, and that's, you know, that's it. So, short term for, like I said, grand openings, special events. Remodeling, if you're remodeling a portion of a building because you need the technical and detailed space, I understand that, but using that as a primary structure, I, you know, from a building code standpoint, I don't agree with that, because I've worked on buildings and where the temporary facilities just get neglected, and then you have the safety issues.
The motion to table, would that come with any special stipulations, or are we just making a motion to table with consideration by the board at the next board meeting?
Well, actually, just want to clarify, the purpose of the motion is to simply let down for, through the other related policy issues before we're gonna inspect the table, I mean, if that's what I'm hearing.
And I think it's just advantageous for him, is it is for us to have this table, because, you know, we could go through a lot of discussion, that's not gonna be enough, and if...
But let's also discuss with the applicants, clear, I mean, you guys know why you're tabling it, you, you, they'll bring it, they'll submit an application to get on your agenda, but it sounds like you're also looking for some more information for him to bring back to the table before you guys want to see this again as well, provided the board up, makes policy change, so maybe it'd be good to just, I think I kind of heard it, I didn't grab it in the motion, but just to...
Yeah, I know if you wanted to...
I would, I would get with Jason, the building inspector, and go and get any concerns that they may have.
And just, just so you know, we lay out that big tent, it's not like a store where it's lined with the walls and up to five inch feet. We have table, eight foot space, table, eight foot space. They're basically laying out, so I know it's a large space, but the fire load is less than a normal five thousand square foot block building, because I can't go up to the ceiling, I go flat, and I have not a lot of room for aisles and such. So I guess we would definitely be willing to work around any requirements that you guys would like, absolutely.
So I think I heard a site plan that provided better circulation for emergency vehicles, and I definitely heard you guys say landscaping that you're offering, so I think we, we should see the landscape.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, we can't assume we're gonna see anything.
Typically, typically the building construction plan, we have an ADA compliance plan, temporary facilities.
And just to say it, I do rent ADA quarter potties, too, so I don't...
I would like to see that also.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yep, completely understand.
Property's in excess of an acre, and I guess I'd like to see some information on your, on your drainage.
Yeah.
So you're gonna work some ground in order to make that happen, so you're looking at site-grade erosion control drainage.
Even for page one, sir, for just the gravel and parking lot, especially.
I just want to know where it's going.
Absolutely, yep.
Because it seems to me as though the high point for the drainage for that curve is right at the intersection of Town Line and one sixty-four, it goes south in one sixty-four and then west down Town Line. We just have to make sure we're not sending it where it wasn't going previously.
I'll work with Jason at end point to get something right away.
Sending water where it wasn't going previously.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry, how did you get the motion?
I believe it, oh, yes, sir.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion. About the table.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, everyone. Along item four B, discussion, consideration, and feedback on a concept plan request for proposed commercial land division resulting in three lots ranging in size from approximately two point seven to nine point four three acres, with a conceptual site plan illustrating potential future development. This property is located along State Highway one sixty-four on currently vacant land, tax key BBB two oh six oh nine 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 zero zero five. Applicant Rick Rivera, Ideal Holdings. The subject property is approximately seventeen point six acres in size and is Zone B four Highway Business District.
All right, do a quick summary, I know Bryce is here, and we'll, and the applicants here as well, and they can speak to their concepts. High-level overview, this is the property on one sixty-four, just opens out to a parking ride, again, Zone B four Highway Commercial. They are proposing a three-lot land division, will probably be done through CSM. They're proposing, there's two concepts, they're very similar, there's a slight, a slight change in acreage between a couple of the lots, but it's generally the same layout. Lots range between the two concepts, lot sizes between two point seven and nine point four three acres. They note that the uses generally would be flexible, commercial contractor-type uses. One of, the applicant is the owner of Ideal Holdings, if I'm getting that right, which is the existing business on site. He had discussed possibly utilizing the smaller adjacent lot for future expansion of his business. They note potential self-storage use there. I believe that's all just sort of conceptual, showing you guys how things could fit on the site, but they can certainly speak to that stuff. Access is currently shared, that arrangement would remain the same to the access point to one sixty-four wouldn't change, and all the lots would be served there. They have engaged WISDOT, it sounds like a traffic analysis, it's not gonna be required, but they were asked to just basically scope it out, provide that information, the application information to WISDOT, and they would provide that verification, but they don't believe they'll need to do a traffic study, but will likely need to do some type of intersection improvements there. There's also a question, and this is, the applicant wasn't necessarily proposing one or the other, but a discussion of whether the road should become a public road or a private road due to public road standards, or something altogether different. So that's something that's probably an important thing to cover tonight. Other than that, I'll maybe just lead it to Bryce to...
All right, thank you, Ben. So I'm gonna pass out, I'm gonna pass out some examples of, and I'll kind of talk about some similar projects that they're fighting to base this project off of. So Ben's staff report provides a great amount of information, I don't want to go too far into detail, but yeah, generally, there would be three proposed parcels with a, for a CSM. Lot one would, is expected to be reserved for probably a larger development, this is expected to be the largest parcel of the three. The property is Zone B four, so we anticipate that any proposed use would, you know, fit within the B four district, or we have to come back for future reselling. Right now, there's really no proposed use for lot one at this time. Lot two features some storage units on the north end. Currently, we show thirty-six units. These would be roughly twenty-five by fifty, you know, your typical storage units. And then on the south end of lot two would be roughly fifteen units of business contractor storage uses. So this would be, in the packet that we just handed out, the first two pages, that would be an example of a different project that we kind of would take the same elements. Basically, there'd be a customer front entrance, and then there would be overhead doors in the rear, so that would be able to be, you know, access from the business owners. And one of the concepts that we're considering here is like a business condominium project, so basically, small business contractors, such as HVAC contractors, electricians, et cetera, they can basically, you know, buy this as a condo, use this for their storage as well as a small office space. This is generally kind of targeted for more of your smaller businesses that may have two to ten employees, could be larger, could be smaller, but it kind of gives you an idea of kind of that target audience. And then on parcel three, there are three potential buildings that are shown, these would be, you know, probably approximately five thousand square feet each. These would be obviously larger than the storage units, but pages three and four of your package show some examples similar to a barn, and we struggled with this word, a barn condominium. So these would probably be, you know, for singular company, a single company. One other option that has been kind of discussed is maybe a clubhouse that would be able to serve, you know, owners and users of lot two and lot three. So for example, Black Tie out of Burlington, Wisconsin, those are the first two pages. They have a clubhouse area, a media room area, that anyone that owns a storage unit within, you know, lot two can access, and so that's just one thing that has been floated as an idea. And then the ideal windows and doors property would remain as is, but as Ben mentioned, you know, currently, we show it as a private road that would be, you know, brought up to public standards. We show a private roundabout that we think would be efficient for kind of move-in traffic within the site. And then stormwater, obviously, at this point, it's a little too difficult to determine exactly where the stormwater, you know, ponds would have to be, but right now, we're assuming it'd be on the west side, in the southeast side of lot three, and potentially in the northeast corner of lot one. We didn't include it in this last concept, but that's another area we're looking at. So at this point, you know, it is conceptual, we are aware that this would require a certified survey map, you know, site plan approval with operation, you know, approval, and then also conditional use permit for the storage unit. So at this point, we're just here to kind of get some feedback, answer some questions, and if there's anything that we can bring back moving forward for more information, we'd be happy to. And I guess before that, Greg, did you have anything that you wanted to cover, or?
Yeah, I think we're just gonna try to build a community of small businesses. We're a small business ourselves, and I think there's a disparity between people actually needing a building and not needing a building that's ten thousand square feet. So there's a lot of options that we've been throwing around. We have people that are friends that possibly want to have a twenty-four hour fitness there, so it's gonna be more warehouse for a high-end contractor unit, is, there will be some contractor... So it's gonna be more warehouse for real, high-end contractor unit is, there will be some contractors there, but it's gonna be more just your aggregate business.
So this is gonna not, just storage units, your attention, I mean, right now, this, the only you have on here is for the land division, correct?
Again, just conceptual discussion only, but I think there's nothing, nothing binding tonight, it's, yeah. There's no action tonight, it's just consultation.
I just, I, looking at your, looking at your plan, there's definitely, I see some parking situations, if you're gonna have anybody bringing customers in, I don't think there's any good parking. Just looking at your, your, you know, your drawing, your layout. So I look at that, get your parking, if there's gonna be public access, there's other departments for handicap spots for each, each retail business may require that, so we have that, that added parking to that. Those are showing the person's layout. Are these all gonna be separate addresses, or is this gonna be under a, like a common, common address with suites? I know you're just putting this together.
Yeah, common address with suites.
Okay, so then would every tenants have their own utility, or would it be under a common facility? Cause you used, you used the word condominium.
It would have to be separate.
So you have separate utilities for each one?
That's a pretty common.
No, and that's, that's why I asked the question, because I, I've seen this where they put it under one common address, and it's, you know, you have separate businesses, two business has, but there are more electrician, you know, that's where that is.
And if I could just speak to the parking, yeah, we, we did do a couple of high-level sketches, we think we can leave the parking, obviously, that would be shown as we move forward, especially for the conditional use permit request, so we'll, we'll certainly show, you know, the parking spaces in a little bit more detail. At this phase in the conceptual, we thought this at least gives you guys a good idea as to what we're looking at at a high level.
Bill, quick question for you.
Yes.
Forty-five foot roundabout big enough to get a fire truck through?
How many foot?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, probably will be. The other concern I do have, is there's only one way in, one way out. And any of these other complexes that we built, or had built, has one way in and another way out. Even the one over National Avenue, even though that one is gated, is locked, but I can open that gate, and I can run the engine from one way or the other. And that concerns me. And the cul-de-sac part, it would be the same thing as what the, uh...
So there's, I think, is that what you're saying, there's only one way in, all the way through this maze? I don't know if you could...
No, I understand, Bill's point is really, if you've got apparatus there, and you need to get water trucks in and out in all directions, you don't have...
Set your plans.
Well, I think, long-term process, parcel one gets developed here, will be in the second exit there.
Well, you also could be trapped in there too, if you, you know, doing one building, all of a sudden, she spreads to another building, and now I can't get out, there's no way to get out. And other places are two ways out, with these big type of complexes.
And are you referring to within this area, or access to one sixty-four?
This year.
Okay. Yeah, we could certainly look into creating...
Another way out of that, off the, uh, off the north end or northeast end?
Yeah, and then eventually, we would be connecting, you know, once again, kind of at, at a conceptual level, we'll be connecting over here. We didn't wanna add another one where there's five different.
Right, but down, down below, you're where you've got the, this section here, you could probably sort of, you know...
Some sort of turnaround, yeah, for us.
And that has got another one way out too, the, the volume there is not quite as much as the volume in lot two. Lot two scares me.
Yeah, I'm taking consideration too for the conditional, your thoughts on the conditional use is that is there gonna be a limit to the type of business that's there? You were in conversations with the facilities that have, the digital use grants is this, and we argue, well, is this business is, or is this... It could just be clearly spelled out, you intend to have, like you said, twenty-four hour fitness, or something like that, somebody's gonna do a crossfit in that building, that that's clearly spelled out on the condition of this application, so that, was that a permitted use?
You're talking about the, the incubator units, if you will.
Correct, yes, so that, that they, they just, you have that on your plan, so that there's not an argument of, what are they actually doing?
Yeah, we had someone, we had someone come in, and they wanted to do diesel repair at one time.
Yeah.
And then there was, there was some concern that that didn't match.
Automotive fuel repair.
Didn't match with the rig, just so they, like, get that all ahead of time, if that, if that maybe isn't...
There's initial building requirements, we're gonna get automotive repair, bodywork.
Bodywork, yeah.
Hazardous, you know, stuff, so.
Part, part of the...
I don't know, it's gonna be retail, retail at all?
Retail, retail makes it a little...
It makes all the coverage. We went through that with, we decided to make parts that, that fly.
Right.
That's why I said, if you guys are planning on doing something like that, make sure you put that all in your conditions.
The types of uses, right, the types of trades.
Clearly spell it out, so that there's no question.
We have to make sure we consider each one, and if there's the condominium condos, what are you gonna call it, right, on, one sixty-four there?
Yeah.
That we already talked about, like, those aren't designed for a retail customer front, those are more so, they take their truck there at the end of the day, you know, park it, maybe work in the shop, but they don't have customers coming front, to the front door. So this would be all the different type of use, and that's why we're gonna further scrutiny on what those expectations are, so that we make sure we're covering our bases.
Yeah, I mean, example that I could tell you, that somebody I know that has a granite business, they do all their cutting, all their prep work, but it's not a share from pick-up granite slabs, that's in another location. So that's, that's how I just wanna give you that, heads off that your conditions for this, you can't use the store, it's that it's clearly spelled out that, you know, all of a sudden, I come in there, and you're like, hey, can I get a membership?
We're, you know, part of the reason for purchasing that parcel around there is, is we kind of wanted to control what was built around our building that's there currently. And so we have a lot of personal pride in our building, and we keep everything tight and orderly, so this is a huge investment, and we're a small company, so we're not gonna, we're gonna thoroughly vet the people that would possibly come in there and be a tenant, or want to buy one of these units. Diesel shops are dirty, so.
No, it's just, it's just, it's because it changes, I mean, when you're talking about minor repair, major repair on a lot, that just changes your, your entire, you know, use of that facility. You have HVAC requirements, fire suppression requirements, so you should, you know, look at what you want there that's not gonna be a nuisance or a problem.
What I'd like to see is occupancy permits for each of the class, bunch of buildings. Get an occupancy permit, that way I know what's going in there, we all know what's going in there, it comes to this meeting here on the planning commission.
That's similar, that's similar, again, to what we did with the lake park condos, right, where the...
Well, we did with some of the lake park condos, but not everybody in the lake park condos.
I think those things work best when the tenant, the...
That's why, that's why I asked if it's separate addresses, or separate, you know, it could be one address for the facility, and suite numbers, but then, because there's separate addresses, every suite would be considered a use.
We'll enumerate the broad uses that B four allows, or the things that the commission doesn't wanna see in those things, and then we'll have to come in for some kind of zoning review. Well, involve a talk with the building inspector, with the fire chief, what are you storing in there, do you, are you, is your water usage unusually high for the use? Cause I have, I, I work in a few communities where those things exist, and you get all kinds of requests. Car dealers that are auctioning a few cars at a ti, you know, the limo, or the Sherpa Rager, they take you around to the, you know, they start their van there for the golf tours that they use. One guy's brewing coffee, roasting coffee in one of, so you do want a lot of things that may need, the other piece is like, some of those buildings are, they're commercially approved for storage, but that doesn't mean you can roast coffee in it, it's gonna need to go back through DSPS approval for, for commercial, and then we get into fire suppression maybe needed based on what they're doing, and so this can work, it's just a matter of, nobody likes surprises, especially the fire department, and so...
Well, it's, after the fact, it always gets a lot more expensive.
Well, not to mention, not to mention, I don't see any place for a septic field. I mean, really gonna be businesses here, you'd have to have some room for a septic field.
Yeah, but we gotta have separate.
Well, I was gonna ask Will, I don't wanna assume, I think, but it's, it's...
Yeah, well, that's...
They don't have to do stormwater, they've already spoken with the DOT, and the DOT's gonna regulate anything that runs on one sixty-four, the village will regulate anything that goes in any other direction. Septic is a good point, right, that's one of the things that I kind of had on my laundry list. Creating drainage stormwater traffic, you have four or five depressional areas on this property. I think if I were you, I'd investigate those requirements, at least on a preliminary basis.
And the septic, if you have, a lot of these buildings, you're gonna have to have a separate holding tank just for the drain water that, it drains in the, in the units. So you'd have to have a holder tank as well, as a septic. So there's gotta be room for this, for that stuff.
Yeah. No, absolutely, I know with, you know, the, the topography out there, we're gonna have to, you know, look into the stormwater, and like I said, at this stage, it's still early enough that we're beginning to go all the way into the details, but those are the kind of things that we've been looking at behind the scenes, so.
No, I, I completely understand, I mean, we're, we're not a plan review, but something to keep in mind.
Could do your homework ahead of time.
Absolutely.
If you have four or five depressional areas out there, and you lose an acre of ground, it may not be feasible, in particular, if it's in four or five different locations.
Yeah.
And the address could be one address, but the building could be one, two, three, four, and when the building one, okay, you may have three tenants, and there, so that'll be A, B, and C. Next one, and then on and on and on, that way you could, I could find it.
Each tenant could be an occupancy that could be controlled through building and fire, not one giant tenant.
As the commission had an opinion on private versus public streets, it's currently in the seventy-two foot, share access easement.
Do we even know if it meets the requirements for a public road?
We have no idea how it's constructed.
Do you even, those nods when Asten is looking at that property, I think they were gonna be required to redo it?
To make it a public grade?
Right.
The home itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you're looking at that, my personal thing, if you're looking at that kind of concentration of use, you know, back there, I would be a bigger fan of being a public road, right? Making sure that it's held up to that standard, we maintain it, obviously, there's a, there's a cost to improve it, to bring it up to that standard, but then we maintain it, it's our road. As long as that fault slash cul-de-sac, roundabout, whatever you wanna call it, can meet the fire department needs, those would be the big concerns from my perspective. And again, if you don't, if you don't necessarily have weight on caring whether it's public or private, you know, let's say we err on the side of public. Personal opinion.
But it sounds like there's no question that it's gonna be to public road standards anyways, it's gonna cost them the same, you're just saying, they don't have to...
But then they become dedicated to the village, you know? Bryce, is that tree line, I know the orthophobe is kind of misleading, is that tree line completely on the, the farm property, or is there, I'm just, you know, cause someday that's, I mean, I know it was planted as a, as a subdivision, it may someday, and all of a sudden, we got a self-storage use with no, no green buffer or anything, I just didn't know if that was part of your property, and it's just the way the lot lines show, it's just, that might be something to think about, as some kind of landscaping between what will be, what will be played on a commercial?
We haven't quite done survey yet, we'll be doing that soon, so we can take a look.
Only, cause if you're trying to use the tree line to maintain, then it could get ripped down, and they probably will keep it, I guess, but if it's scrubby stuff, or whatever.
There was some contention with that, with the other ground, since the bumper landscaping was on.
The one property versus the other?
The other property, so that was, uh, if you want the property of trespass, you can find the trees that were going off.
And there's gonna be landscaping requirements, and so I would think on the perimeter is probably good on this, to not get in the flow of traffic at, throughout the site, so just something to keep... It's good due diligence, that's the homes by Town Line residential. Yeah, I mean, their, their plans are to vacate that, that's been their plan for years, to not put subdivision there, and, and ask for rezoned commercial. So I wouldn't expect it to be a residential, but regardless, it's just good planning to make sure you got that bumper on your property, where you can control their... The re... The re... Yeah, like you said, they've spent time for years, that they're just gonna vacate that, plant, abandon it, and rezon, but it's just waiting for something to start.
We have to have something marked for easement on the north, north side for, for second...
Once it gets in the E door for like an out, or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, for future phases, yeah, if that's the concept.
The drive access, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would have to...
Like coming through lot one, it's again.
I guess just to clarify, so, Paul the Broke Sanders, it sounds like the preference would be to vacate the public press.
Gets you off the hook, I guess.
Helps with maintaining, for sure. Yeah, just, we'll have to go back a little bit to the drawing board in terms of the setbacks for the, the contractor storage, we'll have to work on that, but that should be...
Have you seen any preliminary progress on this property, I'm curious if the view there is all the second access to one sixty-four?
If that brought up during the D O T call, and they wanted to ask...
I don't remember, yeah.
They weren't against it, they didn't require it, but they weren't against it.
But there's nothing that precludes them to do, that, that was my recollection, I just wasn't sure what they had in case they wanted to have that on.
Which D O T called?
There was an initial D O T call when they reached out to WISDOT to determine if a traffic study was gonna be needed, based on their conceptual plan. There was a staff meeting that a few people were on, to get that initial conversation.
Anybody else got any other questions, comments, of yours? Appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Thanks. Moving along, item four C, discussion, consideration, feedback on a concept plan request for a proposed land division. Create one new single-family residential lot on an existing farm parcel, this property is located at South Eight Two West Two Three Four Eight Zero, Artesian Avenue on the west side of the Village of Big Bend, tax key BBB two oh six nine 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 seven zero zero six. Applicants Matthew Madeline Strickler. The subject property is approximately fifty-six acres in size in a Zone R two residential district with an agricultural overlay. Ben.
All right, I will be brief here, but the, the parcel is fifty-six acres, families here, and can speak to what they're trying to do, but just general summary they're proposing. And, and they did correct my concept plan, it shows about one point four, five acres being proposed. That's gonna be closer to an, to an acre, won't run quite as far, far north, so, okay, this is just conceptual, but I wanted to, to correct, correct the record there. So they're proposing to carve off a single lot for single-family purposes. They would like that lot to be served without direct public road access, that is something that the village can approve, that was done similarly in twenty nineteen for the lot on the, or lot to the south, where they created a single-family lot. It is served by private access easement through the farm to the south, but part of the deal, and, and I wasn't in the room when it happened, but there may be a few of you that, that were a few years ago. It sounds like part of that approval required that they submit, and this would be exhibit B, what I would call a remnant parcel plan, basically showing, once we carve off this piece, how are you gonna, what, what's the, what does the orderly development of this land looks like? Just to make sure that this follows some kind of plan. And so with this... And so with this, they also required a road reservation yet created. So that road reservation would allow for future road dedication, should these lands get substantially developed. That would extend the road stub from the subdivision west of this remnant parcel. And so the, the family seems agreeable to that type of arrangement, similar to the last time. They're not ready to, it sounds like do full development plans, but are trying to create one additional lot for a family member, but also understand that they have a lot at stake and are interested in orderly development, and so are looking for some feedback on the ability to do this, this second one, without having to address some of these, you know, actually bring in roads, so on and so forth. So one thing I always like to mention, and I had a nice chat with the property owner before the meeting, is that when we're talking about one or two lots, it's typically not a long-term concern about this orderly development. But one thing that I've seen happen in some communities is you have a continual one-off, one-off, be it flag lots, strange arrangements, because you don't, you're never extending a road, you're never extending a road. Eventually, you run into this issue where the economics no longer work, because you have land that's, you have substantial land that's nowhere with very limited road frontage. And so the only way to develop these lots now, because you've done little incremental development, is to do a long road extension to a limited number of lots, and now the economics between the cost of that road extension and the few remaining lots that you get out of it don't work, and all of a sudden people get a little bit stuck. Because all the folks that did the one-offs, they're not gonna be paying for this road, those costs gotta be borne by the, the folks buying those lots. So that's really a concern about the, for the developer, for the, for the property owner, but it is, it is a relevant concern. I have seen that play out when, when folks aren't, at some point, when they're limiting their, their public road frontage. And I don't know that this is a case, but it's just something to think about as, as you guys discuss that. So I will, maybe the Stricklers could, could present here, they're, they're here, and I'm sure you guys have a bunch of questions.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Don Strickler, South Eight Two W Two Three Three One Zero, Artesian Avenue. That's actually just down, down the street, yep. Pretty well over where we live. But I have been asked by my mother, Maxine, who's the actual owner of the property, to speak. Mom has a very difficult hearing problem, and so communication is somewhat of a challenge. But I guess our only intent here is to provide an opportunity for our son Matt and his wife Madeline, and their little one. They'd like to build a house. Obviously, they need some property to do that. We did do it in two thousand nineteen with your help, thank you. We'd like to do the same thing. This is not a chronic problem. The only other land division was in nineteen fifty-eight, when my mom and dad built a house. So I think we have given this a lot of consideration. My father was involved in the planning commission for a number of years here in Big Bend, and before that in Burne. And we've tried to be aware that there's only so much land in the world, and you gotta use it efficiently. So through a lot of discussion and family compromise, this is the plan that came up. Trying to be fair to everybody that is involved for future development, because, you know, people gotta live somewhere. And that's about it. And if there's any questions, please feel free.
We have allowed a number of three houses to go on one kind of road in the past, so I don't know if that, that's an issue or not.
Yes, there is the one entrance, but if you look kind of closely at the larger, technically the road, or the driveway for the farmhouse, which is behind the barn there, there's another driveway that goes up past the barn that is serviceable. And when we did this last time, Bill actually did, Mr. Brown, excuse me, did come, look around, has, you know, put forth some requirements in the driveways. We understand how many we do, good start here.
So we're gonna just continue up and insert the lot? Is it right, the driveway easement for this lot is here, would this one just come up and, is that how this lot, would the driveway just continue that way, or how would, how does this?
No, it, it comes up this, I'm sorry, what are we looking at here?
This is the...
Yeah. It, it comes right up this way.
But how would it get, I guess, how would it get?
We're gonna go across this.
Ah, okay. Jog it again. Okay, got it.
What's this done?
Future road dedication for that is too?
Yeah, this is actually scenic drive, that comes into here, and it actually is like, like this. This is the dedicated road, it comes like this, and then goes over like this. So that is another lot, and the order here, it's something, and it comes off scenic, goes over by this house, which is not here, or not in picture, but that is the idea that you had a road frontage to have. That was dedicated as a road.
Well, that's good to know.
For that reason. Yeah, we wanna, I mean, we understand that eventually back in, we'll call it.
That's a one of the lifetime lot right there, this. It is, if on top of that hill like that, it's near everywhere.
Well, is that right?
Oh my God.
Well, we'd like to share with our family. We've been fortunate to own the property since nineteen thirty, and kind of have an opportunity, I'd like to be able to pass that opportunity that last.
Is there a thought about coming off of scenic drive without driveway access for this additional lot? That way you have, you know, not as a confusing access for fire rescue or paramedics.
I guess for, for practical purposes, you know, address and some things like that, we thought it would be easier, and I just think for the temporary development right now.
Something about though, eventually it would be on scenic, and then they would have to do an address switch, which could lead to more confusion than less.
Yeah, that, that's a possibility, but it ends up right now, the thought of developing, making scenic a public road onto our property, a wave in the future.
I'm not saying a public road, I'm saying the driveway access.
The temporary easement.
Trying to get the driveway access for this additional lot off of scenic versus off of Artesian. It just makes it a shorter trip for the fire, you know, fire department.
Well, I think we need fire department comments to approve that easement before, so it may get way resolved.
I mean, technically, they come off Artesian, if they go up scenic, they gotta turn into the subdivision and make, wind their way around to the dead end.
Well, I think either way, it's gonna be something.
It would be quicker for us to come up off of Artesian Avenue, climb this hill, and then go up on top, and we'll lay a five inch, whatever we need for either house, and then we can put a tank there, and then that driveway has like a Y, come back out onto Artesian Avenue again. And we have like a turnaround there, so that works very slick for us.
Yeah, I, I actually think about that, I'm, I have a fire department that for myself, so, you know, it is something that is obviously a concern, but I, I, I think at this time, first, just the simple, that it could keep everything in our area, might be a little bit less confusing.
So Bill, does that mean you didn't have concerns to extend the private access up to another lot?
I have no, no, it's a problem.
The joint driveway easement will have, have to be looked at by attorneys over?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there would be something that would need to be drawn up that...
Probably just an amendment.
Boy, an agreement that says we're gonna share this, and, you know, you hate to think
it, that family members don't always get along perfect, but sometimes family members don't always get along perfect, and I can understand, you know, that you may be, would need something written, but a shared driveway at this time has worked out well, so I, I, I'm hoping he listens.
So. You're helping with the land, you sure hope you will, huh?
The other thing, too, is that lower section of their drive from the original is all built quite well, because the milk trucks had to go up there and get the milk all the time. So for us to go up there with a tender that holds three thousand gallons of water, it'd be okay.
At this time, we'd like to keep as much farm land farming as possible, but we always have the idea that it's not always gonna be farm land, that's just, I guess, people need to live somewhere.
I think conceptually, with, with the condition, you know, with the conditions, I think, I don't see a big problem with it.
I think the only thing I would just like to see is just to have you guys update the remnant parcel plan.
Sure.
Because things have changed a lot, like the, the first lot didn't quite, you know, the spirit of it, and not quite, and so I think we just wanna make sure all the puzzle pieces continue to follow the, your plan.
Yeah, absolutely.
That, that would be my ask, is that we get an updated remnant parcel plan, and just kind of look at it, and just, again, I, I think your assumptions are sound in terms of connecting back through to the, maybe some of these roads are a little bit, maybe this was a little bit beyond what was realistic, because you're down in the water, in the drainage area.
Right, I, I mean, over the years, we've kind of thought about this.
But it's just, it's just a concept.
I was saying that we have had offers to purchase land in the past, and we've stayed away from them, simply because when you start getting a lot of patchwork, that's very hard, but some people, it's hard to refuse.
Are you okay, like, we draw the parcel plan, or was it like that?
Well, I can't require anything, I just know that my recommendation would, anytime somebody's creating a lot, not a budding, and it's just typically good planning practice, if you leave in the remnants, to show how you're gonna, and I think it's important here, because you guys have sort of these future reservations, and then the current easements, and everything is predicated on it all kind of coming together at some point in time in the future, so.
Doesn't have to be drawn up.
Just to scale.
By a surveyor?
No, that does not, no, there's something that's to scale, that's not...
Just like this.
Little better than Korean.
Something better than what Will put together last.
I figured, we will do that.
Wow. Glad I came to the meeting.
What you brought up?
Some of that, some of that was a result of...
My back was a little larger than Ben's.
Some of that was a result of my father's vision, so, yeah, there's probably some room to...
And again, I think more, yeah, just, just something to think about. Was there any thought in terms of roads connecting through all, all the way, or I was trying to look at the, the land to the east here, I'm just sort of curious.
Yeah, we, we kind of have given some thought to that also. When you come around, we have some woods in the back, and then you come around the bottom of what would be the hill between my house and the farm buildings, there would be room for a exit there, because I, I, we also understand that a whole lot of the dead ends aren't always the most feasible either, so there is room for that, for future, you know, movement.
Just something to think about though, it's owned by the Waukesha County Land Conservancies.
Oh, you meant that, he meant the conservancy.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, to one sixty-four.
And again, I'm just...
Oil and nature preserve, well, we have nothing to do with that.
And that's why I'm just wondering why all the roads connected to the...
That's, that's a separate property, and we have, we have...
I'm thinking maybe those roads don't need, so I think it's a good...
Right, a little would be, yeah, the, the nature conservancy is, that's never going anywhere, we have nothing.
That was pretty strict, and them, them old girls made that.
What a great neighbor, if you're buying some a lot, that's, that's pretty nice, pretty quiet.
Yeah, when Mary Anderson did that, she was very well aware of what she did, and she could do it.
Yeah, I mean, it really looks like the only way to get road circulation is to connect the two cul-de-sacs to the west, because...
Well, like I said, you could come down through the woods and come out onto, yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, don't, don't ever get there.
Just worry down, yeah. Part about that, like...
Some pieces that always lead to the conservancy, then you wouldn't have to worry about it.
Some of it probably will have to be green space, there's no doubt that, you're always, you're always gonna have that in any kind of development. People like parks, right? Can I understand that?
Is there any other questions for us?
Okay, well, thank, I don't, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything?
Good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item four D, discussion only, impossible direction to staff regarding a planned memory and zoning related to fireworks sales within the village.
So I brought this up in part because I had a little bit of confusion at the, the time when that application for freedom came, came in as a conditional use, so I just thought it'd be a good opportunity to just bring it up as a topic for discussion. As the code administrator, I, I kind of, my thought process was, there's nothing that specifically talks about fireworks use, but we talk about retail sales, and it pretty much falls under retail sales as the best bucket or best fit that I can find. My concern is that retail sales is available as permitted in B one, which perpetuates all the way through to, to B four. We know we have American that's a permitted fireworks business in B three, and we just saw proposal for something in B four, a more intensive district, a commercial district. So I just, I don't know if the intent was to allow, my read of it is that somebody with a fireworks proposal could come into a B one property and propose it. I don't know if that was our intent, but it doesn't feel like a local business district kind of used to me, fireworks sales, they definitely feel more highway oriented, and so I just thought I would bring that up, because I think there may be some vulnerability if the intent wasn't to allow it in those light business districts. Something else to think about is that we have, you know, an industrial district, and that seems to be where you would see fireworks businesses as well as in a motor manufacturing business park content, context, kind of the way American feels, even though there's only commercial, it's, it's very much in an industrial park context. So really, just, just if, if there's some desire to clarify, I'm just looking for some direction, or this could be brought up at, at a future meeting, if you guys want me to bring forward some clarifying language. I just wanted to point that out, that I, I think it could use some clarification.
I would say, yeah, if you're willing to bring through some, some language trust review?
I mean, it seems like we have B three that, and from, like, nothing under B three kind of feels right to me, is my, kind of what my gut tells me. Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't consider it as a case of retail, but I just would say that there's no...
It's not all that specific. Yeah, and I know there was obviously policy discussions in the past with other ordinances about we didn't wanna see too proliferation, and so I think this would be a way to, a more appropriate way maybe to address that, to limit, limit it, so I will put something in the next few months, and we don't have a crazy meeting.
Moving along. Item four E, discussion only, impossible direction to staff regarding floodplain mapping references in the village floodplain ordinance, including awareness of the updated FEMA flood maps and consideration of the next steps.
This will be real quick, because I got confirmation from Michelle Hayes at DNR that we did in fact update our floodplain ordinance in two thousand twenty-three to adopt all the updated flood insurance studies that were done in two thousand twenty-three on the Fox. We just need to publish that in our ordinance that's online or wherever the official codes sit. So it's just a matter of, just an administrative task that I will, that I notify Katie, and we'll make sure that that gets updated in terms of the code. So that's the good news, we're, we're in conformance with the DNR and, and the National Flood Insurance Program. But it is, I do wanna get some guidance in terms of, we don't have our floodplain district mapped anywhere, we're basically relying on the firms, the FEMA maps, and that, that's okay, but it's a little bit challenging for the public to get information if they're in a flood zone, and so certainly something that Cedar could provide would be to just, it's not a big exercise, but would be to just basically adopt your flood maps in a published form, so that somebody could, it, it might be something that we could get on the GIS, but at the minimum, you have a, a map showing your floodplain districts, because the one thing that you guys adopted was flood storage districts in that last update, and that's a state level thing, so that's not a FEMA thing. So, long story short, those won't, if somebody goes to a firm map, they are not gonna be made aware that they're in a flood storage district, and, and that can be pretty impactful to a property owner being in a flood storage district. to a property owner being in a flood storage district. So just probably good to get, if the commission is willing to get some guidance, that we could at least put together a proposal. I think that'd be good, because I think there's some other discussion about other zoning maps that needs some, somebody needs to take some ownership of those things to make sure they're being maintained moving forward. So if the commission's inclined, we can start looking into that.
I've been going through FEMA maps and taking.
Fun stuff.
Minutes to open.
Fun stuff. All right, thank you.
Planers report.
I think we were going to just mention, I'll save it for, Will will bring it up. I don't have anything additional, but there was, we were going to just mention Act 68 real briefly, so.
So if you want me to go there right now.
I don't know if you have anything else, but if we're there, we can.
Sure, I'll skip ahead and build engineers report.
One should have a report that looks similar to this. It's an engineering update, first item on there, 2025 Wisconsin Act 68. The act, which was adopted in December, requires that the village update their land division ordinance by or before July 1st. Attached to this memo is a memo that our office sent to all our member municipalities and then the act itself. I'm not asking you to read it verbatim right now, but we have a window of about four months right now in order to get this taken care of. Because it's an ordinance update, it's going to require a public hearing in order to adopt. So that will be a joint public hearing between the plan commission and the village board. I would suggest that we read this, we familiarize ourselves with it so we can discuss it more diligently at March's plan commission meeting. Item two, we've begun working on the 2026 paving program for the village. We've been directed to prepare plans and specifications to reconstruct the streets of Windwalker Island subdivision, which would include Rabbit Way, Rosemary Drive, and Sherman Lane. For those of you that aren't aware, that subdivision landed in 2007. It's been operating on the two and a half inch thick binder since it went in because the surface never went down. Needless to say, the roads are in need of some work. So we intend to pursue the same approach that we did on Edgewood Court and Rock Drive last year, which would be pulverizing overlay. Finally, the only other thing, I've been working with Eric at DPW about completion of the MS Ford annual report. He's going to take a kick at it, and we will provide whatever resources we can in order to assist him in preparing that map or report on something. It's not a map. That's it.
The only thing I want to just piggyback on Will's Act 68 comment is we have to adopt an ordinance by some June date, but it is effective law, and so Bordeaux feels that that may change some of the nuanced things with respect to how, what we can require from a developer before we allow them to record the plat. So it gets a little, it was part of that homeowners' bill of rights legislation that's been going through the state legislature, and it, I would say the developers were very, they liked that Act 68. So they, it's definitely pro-developer and takes a little leverage away from the community to hold up plat approval before site improvements are installed, but we'll give you guys more information since we're going to need to get moving on that formally in the next few months.
I don't think there are any D O Ts or so, that Bordeaux feels.
No.
You've already been through the preliminary plan, you've been through the concept, and a lot of the language refers to those two items because you need to get through all that before you can get to the final. Yes.
Thank you. Fire inspectors report. Bill?
Okay, 2025 inspections have all been completed. We had some violations in the end of '25, but they have been taken care of. There are, I think, two of them that need to have some time rectified or situated. In '26, we'll be starting them right here shortly again, and everything is fine. Everybody's happy out there and.
Excellent. Got a fish fry coming up?
Well, yeah, I got a fish fry coming up April 3rd, which will be on my birthday. So if you guys want to come to the fish fry and give me a present, that's fine.
What do you got by a 40-year-old guy?
Thank you.
Forty-year-old girl.
All right, we don't have anything from.
Kathy, don't worry.
Okay. Jason?
Oh.
Uh, reports.
No, no additional reports.
Okay, it's all good. The next meeting day will be Thursday, March 19th, 7:00 PM.
Take most of your journey.
Same. And start getting any further discussion. All the papers. Bill?